I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, a free and sovereign republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order a roll call and declarations of conflicts of interest, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes, and none.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes, and none.
Councilmember Moniz?
I'm sitting.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes, and none.
Mayor Booblaq?
Here, and none. Okay, we have four of us here to make the big decisions. Approval of agenda as posted or amended?
I have an amendment because one of our presenters needs to leave a little early. Can we please switch the action items in before item three so that the order would be B, A, D, and C, then we would have public participation?
Okay, we have motion? A second, Doc. And a second. Could you call the call, please?
Councilmember Larson?
Clarification. We're moving those ahead of public participation?
Yes.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
No.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaq?
Yes, passes three, one. All right, moving on to proclamations, recognitions, we have a presentation from Opportunity Stanislaus. You guys ready?
Ready.
All right.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us today, council and community. Dave White wanted to be here today. He had a prior commitment, so he will not be here. But my name is Herman Zavalsa. I'm the chief innovation officer of Opportunity Stanislaus and SBDC director. I'm joined today by Macy Silva, who's our Turlock program specialist. You know, she might be a familiar face here. So I'd like to start off by telling you a little bit more about Opportunity Stanislaus. So Opportunity Stanislaus is all about improving the economic vitality of Stanislaus County. Now, we do that by helping local entrepreneurs start their business, by attracting innovative companies to the county, and by helping employer employers grow their business. We help companies by assisting them in their workforce readiness needs, by helping them to navigate through the regulatory process, by introducing them to financial incentives and financial programs, and by helping them locate appropriate sites and buildings to meet their needs. Now, all of this work is done through our four different divisions, and that's talent development, marketing and communication, business development, and of course, the Valley Sierra SBDC, small business support. Now, OS, SBDC, and VOTE have been strong partners with the city of Turlock for many years. OS has supported the city of Turlock in the following company attraction and expansion projects: Blue Diamond, Valley Milk, Amazon, and a host of others. Now, OS has visited hundreds of Turlock businesses in the last five years and have provided service to many. Now, OS and the City of Turlock Cavi partnership at VOTE Institute, by which Turlock has offered scholarships to Turlock citizens for VOTE advanced manufacturing training. OS has supported the city of Turlock by managing a grant by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services to support the development of the grocery outlet development along West Main Street. And OS is currently working with the city of Turlock on an indoor sports center project that would attract basketball, volleyball tournaments, and teams throughout California. Now, up on the list, you'll see a list of people from the city of Turlock that sit on our board. We have a very involved board, and the following Turlock businesses are major investors in Opportunity Stanislaus. I'm happy to provide a list if anyone wants to see it. Now, I'm here today primarily to talk about the Turlock Small Business Large Impact Project. Now, our grant was awarded on February 1st. Upon receiving that award, we hired a full-time Turlock program specialist, Macy Silva, on the 11th. We were very fortunate to open our office on March 1st. We're located in the Mona Vista Crossings, the Valley First Credit Union, inside of the Mona Vista Crossings. A needs assessment was launched on April 13th. We are still working on that, on completing that, and I'm very excited to tell you about our Turlock Business Summit that took place on May 24th. Now, I do want to share some of our outcomes. Now, please keep in mind that, you know, we have been serving the city of Turlock for quite a few years now, but specifically through this project, we've assisted two businesses with their startup needs. Those two businesses helped create four new jobs. We've retained 164 jobs. Total capital infusion, we've assisted our businesses with, we've helped our businesses secure $87,000 in capital infusion. That's loans and equity. And our counseling and training data, we've served 66 clients since February 1st for a total of 108.37 client hours and trained over 145 clients. Now, that includes the Turlock Business Summit. Now, I do want to read a success story before we dig into that a little deeper. This is a client from the city of Turlock. Due to client confidentiality, I am not going to be sharing any names, but this is an email that I received from one of my consultants who was working with the client. Herman, I wanted to extend my compliments and appreciation regarding Amy and Stephanie in response to a client emergency situation. Client M03499 emailed me with an emergency request saying he didn't know who else to turn to. He and his assistant manager had tested positive for COVID, and his other two staff members also reported in sick, possibly also COVID positive. He didn't know what to do regarding complacency, for example, shutdown, reported, et cetera. It was late afternoon, knowing it would be HR-related, and out of my realm of expertise, I called the office. You were in a meeting, and Joseph was out of the office. Amy and Stephanie immediately stepped up to the plate. We discussed the situation, and I recommended getting an HR expert in. They decided on Stephen K., one of our consultants, tracked him down, he was in transit, and advised him of the situation, keeping me in the loop. Steve followed up with the client ASAP in the early evening, also highly commendable, gave him what he needed to be done, and helped client M03499 resolve the situation. Their concern for the client, teamwork and follow-up was admirable and professional. I felt you should know. Now, I'm sharing this story because, you know, the numeric data can only say so much, but that's one example of the great work that we are doing through our consultants, and we're very excited and privileged to serve the city of Turlock. Now, I'm going to hand the mic over to Macy, who will tell you a little bit more about the Turlock Business Summit that took place last month.
All right. Okay, can everyone hear me? Perfect. There you go. So getting, when we first got the contract with the city of Turlock, having the summit was always on our top list of priorities for the first things to do along with our business needs assessment. The summit was an all-day event. The doors opened at 8:30, and the event started at 9:00. Amy Booblaq was one of our speakers who opened the event, and we had three workshops throughout the day. The workshops were based on the needs assessment, which included marketing and social media, access to capital, and strategies coming out of COVID. The event overall had 136 people attend, not including our staff, that's why they weren't the final number. And overall, it was a pretty great event. It was free to local businesses. We marketed it through social media, press releases, we had a billboard created for it, and also the city council helped us spread the news along with the city staff. Overall, great reviews on the event, and this is going to be the first of many, hopefully. We had the Grand Oak, the Grand Oak banquet hall, and they, it was a pretty great event. Overall, I'm trying, I want to give you guys the review numbers, but maybe we can talk about that after. I know we're on tight schedule, but yeah, great event. Hopefully, next year will be even bigger. Our goal for next year is probably going to be around 240, based on the numbers we had this year, but we'll keep you guys in the loop next you go around. Right.
Thank you. So some pictures to share from the Turlock Summit. On the front left there, that's Lynn and Amanda, who are also assisting with the Rising Tights program that we're going to be launching soon in Turlock. On the right, there's a quick snapshot of the event, and I believe we're holding questions until then, correct?
Sure.
Okay. Or does anyone have any questions? I'm happy to...
Questions for, from here? Nicole?
In the back? Yes, sir.
Do I stand up?
Yeah, just come on up here, sir. Oh. This pertained to the business summit, sir?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay, okay.
Sorry, sir, yeah. So specific to Opportunity Stanislaus or the project that we're working, that we're collaborating on?
No.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is that it? You guys, thank you so much for doing that. It was a great event. There, I've had a lot of feedback, so positive feedback. People are inspired. They started, you know, I want this consultant, they aligned my values, so it's, it's pretty cool what's going to happen here, and once people start sharing their story, I believe others will say, okay, let me try this. So thank you guys for being here and for doing this. All right, moving on to item eight, A, I'm sorry, B, my bad. Request authorize city manager to work with Legacy Health Endowment. Ms. Eddy, you have your own mic.
I do. I found it. No, IT was very gracious and helped get a mic. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. The item before you this evening is a request to authorize the city manager to work with Legacy Health Endowment for Legacy Health to design an RFP for a pilot program for mobile health services. In June 2021, Mayor Booblaq appointed Vice Mayor Franco and Councilmember Moniz to an ad hoc committee on homelessness. On February 22nd, 2022, a report was presented to city council detailing the committee's findings and recommendations. One of the recommendations to city council was to expand access to primary health care for Turlock residents, particularly for families caring for disabled adult or child, socially isolated seniors, and the homeless. This pilot program will extend primary care access, health screenings, and health education to those with limited access to health services, including the homeless population. Services may also include mental health services. Legacy Health has agreed to assist the city in designing the RFP and evaluating the responses to the RFP at no cost to the city. The draft scope of services, which is attachment B of this report, outlines the pilot program, including types of services, mobile unit specifications and equipment, mobile unit staffing, and proposed route. RFP submissions must include a plan to work for residents and organizations to identify convenient, easily accessible locations for mobile clinic parking. The estimated cost for this one-year pilot program is estimated to be $350,000. Staff is proposing ARPA as the funding source. If this item is approved by council this evening, staff will work with Mr. Lewis to get this project started. Mayor and council, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Lewis, president and CEO of Legacy Health Endowment, for the time and service he has dedicated to this pilot program. He has made himself available to meet with staff during the week, after hours, on weekends, taking telephone calls, and he has just, he is a true public servant. That's all I can say to that. He's been fabulous to work with. And he's here to answer questions, and if I can answer any questions, we're happy to do so at this time.
Questions for Ms. Eddy or Mr. Lewis from my colleagues? Duncan? Okay, we'll open it to the public. Anyone wishing to make comment or question, please come forward.
I'll go first.
Okay.
Okay.
And this is about the specific topic, right?
This is about TNR.
No, no, this, this is for, right now, we're just doing the topic that we just read on. It'll be shortly for that.
Okay.
And then you, you filled out something, ma'am? You filled out this card, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I will call you first, I promise. Okay, anyone else wish, or anyone wishing to speak about this topic, the mobile vendor? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back for suggestion?
Move to approve.
We have motion?
Seconded.
And a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaq?
Yes, it passes four zero. Thank you, Mr. Lewis, for all of your support, and Ms. Eddy. Item, action item A, request adopt the city of Turlock general fund and non-federal general fund budgets for fiscal year 2022-23. Director Moreno.
Thank you, mayor and council members. Tonight's action is the formal adoption of our general fund and non-general fund budget for the fiscal year of 2022-23. Going through the process, we looked at right of expenditures, pension obligations, and future items that we'd look to bring back, including fiscal policies. But going through the process at this time, we, again, we talked about visioning and goal setting, and how we can formally adopt this budget. Within that process, we talked about the priorities, which consisted of building reserves, public safety, recreation and parks, staffing levels, equipment and vehicle reserves, the general plan, and technology. So through the workshops that we utilized on May 4th and May 24th, staff believe that we have hit those objectives within the overall budget. So I'm happy to, and privileged today to be able to announce that we have a formal general fund balanced budget of about seven point, I'm sorry, 51.7 million. Total FTEs within this overall objective, we do have an ink, within your budget report, you have about 400 full-time FTEs, but with the approval of the, and adoption of the general fund budget and non-general fund budget, you'll, you'll also increase it to about 406, with four reclassifications coming out of the augmentations. So at this point, I just want to open it up to any comments or questions. I did list within the staff report of any potential changes. Again, as we went through this process, it is a fluid document. We do update and change all the way through to the formal adoption, but again, I'm happy to present a balanced budget today. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions from Director Moreno? I think we've exhausted this one.
Yeah.
I know you want questions, though, right?
Hey.
Since we have none, open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in regard to the fiscal budget of 2022-23?
What was it talking about?
General, I'm sorry. General funds?
Go ahead.
General fund 51.7.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes, Mr. Fu. I thought he'd say.
Council staff, Turlock citizens, I just had a quick question. You say you make modifications or changes all the way up until it's adopted. So since we had our last meeting last month, could you tell me what those changes have been, the changes that have been made since we last met? Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public hearing, and if you could speak to that, Mr. Moreno?
Sure, so I'll go through the staff report. So within the general fund, there was an increase of $100,000 of revenue, and this was due to FEMA reimbursement that we were looking to submit. Staff has already had in the budget part-time expenditures for a part-time staffing individual to work on this project. We did receive a notice from FEMA that it needs to be submitted by December 31st, so we're, in essence, to expedite this task, we've included a revenue now because, and the intention of submitting. There is increases in the city manager's department for reclassification for the homeless coordinator position from a part-time to a full-time. Although that position is not formally updated and approved within this budget, the expenditures are there to have future conversations with council on that job description and position. So there was an increase in addition to human resource department for $100,000 to increase for the contract for CPS for consultant services. There was a decrease in expenditures in the finance department of $50,000 for the feasibility study, really in essence, just to push it out a little further, most likely starting this study in January instead of right upon adoption. In the non-general fund, we've had some increases or decrease in the augmentation process. There was $100,000 that was looking to be funded. We have decreased that to $50,000.
Okay.
The last one, the increase in general fund of 215,000, non-general fund of these overall increases. That concludes the additions.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments before we go to a vote? Or motion?
I have some comments here. Thank you for putting forward. My, my comments are specifically related to the policy around some of the decisions that we're making here. I know that this council has talked about, on the ARPA side of things, we have some line items that are calling for ARPA funds to be used for salaried positions, and I just don't think that that's good policy for using one-time funds to fund ongoing expenses. I know that's been expressed by my colleagues, but this budget we're putting forward here is calling for that, that action. Additionally, we were putting ARPA funding towards a measure that I have seen zero support from the public, and zero support in these meetings and email, and actually trying to find a member that agrees with the direction of this council. And then, in particular, on the $142,000 spend for Turlock Gospel Mission Agreement, it's the, one of, you know, the greatest line items for homeless response efforts from this city. We have no means to track its effectiveness in actually addressing root causes associated with homelessness, and there's been suggestion that, that this city is not allowing some of our nonprofits to engage in some new housing methods, such as pallet homes for our service providers, so there's just not enough transparency there as to what our service providers are able to do to modify the existing services to better address those needs. So for those particular reasons, I just can't support the budget.
Cliff, anyone else or motion?
Just a couple of comments as well. Throughout this living document, I think that staff has done a really great job listening to the council's priorities as a council, so being the, the majority of the voice up here, and I totally understand that, and that's what our city is designed to do, is to listen to the majority. However, as we've gone through this, this process of anticipating how we're going to design our fiscal year, we've had a lot of decisions that have been made that have been, in my own opinion, my own council seat opinion, not in the best interest for the, the greater population, ARPA being that we're funding positions, and we're using a large amount of funds, over $4 million, to knock over only $5 off of our garbage bills, rather than creating an actual meaningful, affordable program for low-income or people that are struggling to make, and as we are increasing our, our garbage, garbage rates for something that is simply outside of our control. I think that it, it talks to the preparation or the thought that goes into those decisions, and the feedback that we've received was obviously wanting us to rethink that, and I'm, I just can't, although I want to be an absolute team player in terms of the direction that this council chooses, it's going to be the direction, I can't sit here and act like some of those decisions didn't have the opportunity to be re-discussed or reevaluated for the betterment of our community. We have funds sitting in our cannabis fund that were designed for youth programs that is still not being designed in this, in this budget, when we had a lot of funds to discuss and have absolute adequate staff in our parks department, and really smart people at our staff level that can design a fantastic program, or even allow it to be applied for by the community at large with our nonprofits. There was no movement on it, and simply because, in my estimations, because it was coming out of our cannabis, our pilot program, which is just, it's, it's too, it's too bad and disheartening, because it has the potential to actually make a difference in a lot of kids' lives in our community. And also that we are, have the most road funds in our entire history as a city. They're not a lot. They're not going to get our roads done tomorrow. However, we have an opportunity now to plan with funds that we actually have access to that we can count on, but rather, we are trying to get done, we are trying to redo our entire road network in a very, very short amount of time that is simply, in my estimation, is going to cause a lot of, cause a lot of issues and a lot of change orders with that estimation, that I think that we have an ability now to take a step back and really plan for the long run, rather than trying to address things in the short term that have been complaints that everyone's been complaining about in terms of their road structures. It's horrible, the conditions aren't great, however, we need to have a much more thoughtful conversation about it, especially with the amount of funds that we have coming into our city, and not spend more to, that, take more out of our general fund to have consultants answer that question for us, when we have very capable staff to do so. I also voiced opinions about how our city attorney's office is, is budgeted for. I know that we've had lots of changes over, and I think that George is an absolute fantastic man, a very, very smart attorney. I think that we have an opportunity here to really think about how we budget properly for the legal needs throughout our city, and I just don't see that also reflected in this budget. Like I said, not reflection on staff. Staff is doing the job of, of taking, of taking the majority opinion, moving on. That is what I fundamentally disagree with, and it's difficult for me to support the first budget that's coming out of Measure A, where we ask the public to trust us, to have them have every dollar meet them as quickly as possible, and I just don't see that here in this budget. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Move to approve the budget.
Okay, before I second it, just real quickly, if we're going to grandstand a little bit here, two of my colleagues have had an opportunity for several months, probably six months, to work on marijuana and youth education, and didn't come forward with anything, so, you know, we all have to put in a little bit of time. We're getting staff now, but everybody has to put a little into this. All of the things that have been said have been voted on previously, and the yea and the nay votes could have dictated that, so this is something that has to get set, and obviously, we're, at this point, we can understand that it's going to be a two-two, and we're probably not going to get, we're going to get in trouble with the state so that we can have our budget done. It's, these are the things that are already voted on, but we're going to vote on it again with those little clarifications. That, that makes it tough for us. The, the funds that came from Measure A, we already, we did this. You, you want roads? We put it in roads. You wanted police and fire? We did that. Wanted, everything we said we'd do, parks, we're putting it into that. So to say that people are not happy with Measure A is, I, I hear nothing but that, you know, we're safer, the roads are starting to get fixed. Yes, yes, I, I did say I'd love to have them done in five years. I truly know that that won't happen, but it's good to dream. It's good to have goals and get towards those. Anyhow, I will second the, the vote, and let's go ahead and call the, the roll.
Councilmember Larson?
No.
Councilmember Nasrati?
No.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaq?
Yes, and it's a standoff, so we'll bring it back to another meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Moreno, okay. And item D is request authorize city manager execute three-year agreement with Stanislaus County for the Home Investment Partnership Program. Ms. Ramos?
Last time I was here, I flipped everything, so moving things out of the way. Okay, so, three-year agreement. Good evening, mayor, council. In March of this year, the Housing Department notified HUD that the city of Turlock would be withdrawing as lead entity for the city of Turlock Stanislaus County Home Consortium. On April 4th of 2022, we received confirmation that HUD had accepted our decision to withdraw as the lead of the home consortium and partner with Stanislaus County for the new Stanislaus County Home Consortium. As a requirement of the home consortium, each partnering jurisdiction is required to enter into an agreement with, with the lead entity or Stanislaus County in this case. The consortium agreement, if approved, would allow Turlock to be designated as a subrecipient of the county and be eligible for home funds for the next three fiscal years. The request before you would approve a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into a three-year agreement with the county, and that's Exhibit A, for the Home Investment Partnership Program or the Home Consortium. It is staff's recommendation to approve the resolution. If you have any questions, I'm free to answer.
Questions for Ms. Ramos?
Yes, questions. What would happen if we said no to this?
We would not be eligible to receive any of the home funds or participate in the home consortium for the next three years. Our next eligible date would be in three years' time. We could apply to receive home funds through the state, or apply independently through HUD. With HUD, there is a calculation or a threshold that we have to meet in the presentation that I did regarding staying in the consortium or getting out that amount of funding, and I can't recall that amount.
We're too small.
Yeah, we are too small. We would have to put in a portion, and that is annually. The state funds, we could apply annually with them. It is a competitive basis. We would be competing against cities in Southern California, and that basis...
As well as the consortium.
Right, it is. And there's, based on need, and our county or our city's need would be much less than that of the cities in Southern California.
Okay. And then, can we still request funding for, for our own projects from the county consortium when they have excess unused funds?
Yes, unless they have designated for something else, and that would be up to the county to determine how they want those funds to be used. But normally, just like we would if there was a partnering agency or a member of the consortium who had a project and wanted to do something, and they were able to show the timeframes and the expectations, or the... the timeframes and the expectations or the deadlines of when those monies would be funded, as long as it was within that eligible timeframe, then we would have no problem in allowing them to expend or use the monies.
And this doesn't take away from our allocation? So being the, not being the lead agency does not affect our allotment?
No, they, in the next, in the next item that I have, that's the one-year agreement that will give us our allocation for the upcoming year.
Great, thank you.
Counselor?
Following up on the can we request specific fundings if there's excess unused funds? How does it look with this new arrangement if the City of Turlock wanted to develop an affordable housing project? Do they, would the, not the City of Turlock, I guess, a partner, a nonprofit partner, wanted to develop something in the City of Turlock, do they go straight to county to do?
They would go to the county. Yes, they would go to the county if you're looking at using the 2223 funding. We do still have the funding from the current year and the previous year for the home, the City of Turlock-Stanislaus Home Consortium, or the old consortium. It's going to be really confusing to explain. And so the old money that we have, that we still have available for projects if you're, if there are agencies or community housing development organizations that are wanting to apply for some of these funds, there is funding available still. And so even our partner cities or our consortium members, if they have projects and want to request some of that funding from us, and it is an eligible activity, then we could definitely look at that.
At what point does the city engage with, you know, a potential development? If a nonprofit comes to the county, they identify land to develop on, they want to build an affordable housing complex, the county agency, the staff there will, at what point are they going to be engaging with the City of Turlock? And does the City of Turlock have any control over whether or not those projects will move forward?
It, the agency could come to both of us or either one of us. We would actually partner with the, if it's a large amount of money, we would ask the new consortium to partner with us and, you know, and try to maximize the dollar amounts that, for a particular project for that agency to assist them with the creation of those units. And it just depends on the amount of money. We have a lot of the older money that we're wanting to use, and obviously, we would want to use that money first before we try to, there I go, before I try to, or before we try to expend the new money that's coming. Obviously, the county is going to want to use their money because they're going to have the same deadlines that we have, and so their timeliness is going to be an issue next year and the year after that. So they're going to want to use that money first. So we're going to, I mean, we're not sure how it's going to work yet. We're trying to figure it out. We're hoping that we will be able to join forces and assist the agencies who are wanting to develop something, you know, regardless of what city it is, because we do have a lot of home money currently from the old consortium, and then the new consortium is getting another large pot. So we're going to try to expend the old before the new, but it will be up to the county and how they want to, you know, work with us.
So with this new structure, are two governing bodies going to have to make approving, approval votes for developments in the City of Turlock that are affordable housing?
The county will have to approve the money for the expenditure of the new consortium funds. We would have to approve the money for any use of the old consortium funds. If they're going to, usually with projects, we can put in CDBG and home, we wouldn't necessarily have to approve a project in Turlock. I mean, obviously, for, you know, they'd have to go to planning and building and everything else to get that project off the ground, but as far as using funds, if they're not using our funds, we would have no say in that.
Really quickly, to follow up on that, on those questions. So yes, our allocation is not going to change in terms of what our city, as like a participant that we receive, is not going to change since like last year, let's say, or a few years back.
It actually decreased, and we'll look at that in the next item.
Right. So as a participant, it decreased, but what we're approving now in terms of giving the lead agency, you know, to the county, which has already been voted on previously, of that, I'm not really sure if it actually did get voted on, but that's the direction that was given, to have the county take over. The county now has total authority to say what types of monies and what types of projects the City of Turlock can spend money on for affordable housing opportunities.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Previously last year, we actually controlled and approved and really were, we were the lead agency to help all of our neighboring agencies with their affordable housing projects. And if they didn't finish their affordable housing projects, the City of Turlock, we were able to decide regionally where to place that money.
Correct. It's up to the lead agency to determine what projects are going to be, going to be offered or what activities they want to offer for that year. For this year or this upcoming year, the county has been generous enough and provided some funding. We have been informed that it is possible from the future years forward, beyond next year, that they're going to look at pots, and then we're going to have to, when we have a project or want to do something, it's possible that we would have to apply for that funding and, you know, and, you know, have all the information ready before we are even looking at a particular project or approve for the expenditure of a project. It's not going to be a dollar amount that's designated to us, but we don't know that for a fact yet.
Yeah, for my last, thank you. For the last, for my last questions, since I know that the consortium was like made in like the 90s, right? Because we were small communities trying to compete for federal and state affordable housing dollars to create projects and make sure that we could actually do it adequately. So we did it as a group, and Turlock was elected the lead agency. So given that background, approving this and also with this budget that was proposed that will probably be approved, this will be the year since that creation that we have had the least amount of affordable housing dollars in our city in terms of home funds, HUD funds, federal dollars that we were able to control and expend in our community.
I want to say yes, because our, as a consortium, we had the full amount available to us. If the, you know, or the remaining amount, whichever, that our member cities didn't spend, expend within that timeframe.
Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Absolutely. I apologize for that. Come on up, open the public comment, Mr. Treewiler.
Yes, council staff and Turlock citizens. I believe it is important, I'm going to have some comments to make, and then I'll have a couple of questions to ask you. I believe it is very important that we approve this agreement here under the circumstances. But the circumstances are the clue to this. This whole thing was not necessary. We had all these funds available to us to help our low-income citizens, and we did an excellent job with these funds. We have houses in town, we have Avina Bella. I mean, have you looked at Avina Bella? Have you been over there and looked at that building and how many people we are housing there? We could have done this, and I do have, I'm going to ask you two questions then, but I'll keep making comments. So the Avina Bella, would it ever be possible under these current circumstances to produce a beautiful project like we did with Avina Bella? You can answer it later. That's question number one. And my second question is, we also have the Salvation Army who built the Silvercrest Housing Complex, which is another gorgeous, beautiful facility in this city for our low-income people. These two facilities have kept people, homeless people, off our streets because they have such a way of using the money and delegating it. I know with the Salvation Army, what you do is you pay one-third of your income, and you get a room. If you make $1,000, you pay $333. If you make $2,000, you pay five, or one-third of 2,666 a month. I mean, it allows people who are on low income and having trouble meeting expenses to have a place to live, so they're not out on the street, they're not homeless. Why would anyone in the city want to stop a beautiful, great program like this program? It makes no sense. It makes no sense. Okay, so I don't know if we'll ever get back to this. I don't know if we would ever have another opportunity at something like this, a whole pot of money to help our low-income and people who are potentially going to be homeless so they don't have to be homeless. Why would we pass something as great as this up? I do not understand it. And we need to start thinking here in Turlock. There's just not enough thought, and I know we've got some good people on staff that hopefully are going to give us some of the thought that we need to do the correct thing and not make mistakes like this. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back. Will you answer the questions, please?
Sure. So large projects like Avina Bella or Crane Terrace, based on the funding, if we're strictly looking at the funding that is designated to us for or from the consortium, that wouldn't be sufficient. But depending on how much money the consortium has or the new consortium will have, there is a possibility that we may be able to request some of the funding if the other cities haven't used it. So there is a possibility. I don't know if, you know, if and how much would be available to us. It will all depend on how our other partnering cities are using their money or if they're going to be using it. So, I mean, but based on the funding that we are going to be allocated, we wouldn't be able to.
And Ms. Ramos, how much money do we have right now?
In the home account?
In all of it.
Oh, in all of our funding, we have a total roughly about 18 million.
Okay.
And that is, I mean, that's, a lot of it has come within the last two years, just, you know, throwing that out there.
And this 18 million is also, has its own set of guidelines, regulations. It's not just like 18 million where, hey, do whatever you want. There's, it's all federal grants really locked up tight. You have to fit certain criteria, it has to be, you have to report on it.
Right. And it's, we have State Home, we have Cal Home, we have Homes, Home Consortium, we have RDA, the old RDA successor agency, we have the Home ARP funds. It's just all of the funding that we have. Yeah. And there are certain requirements for each and designations of those funds.
And with this approval, we're also going to have to think about considering, our staff levels would also be threatened, that would be in charge of overseeing those programs, how that 18 million would be administered.
Correct. For the upcoming year, we are able to use some of the administration funds that we had in the home account, and we've gotten confirmation from HUD that we can use that. So that will allow us to retain our home, or the person that was designated under home. So that, for that reason, we're not requesting any of the general fund, funds for this upcoming year. Probably we can sustain that salary for her based on the monies that we have for probably about two years, but after that, we're going to have to look at different ways of covering that salary.
And last question, how much institutional knowledge does that staff, single staff member have about how these affordable housing programs work and how they stay legal and relevant and, you know, they check up all of the boxes that these federal funds need to be checked?
Sherry is our program specialist. She handles all the reporting for all of our projects. She's been here a total of 27 years, right around there. So there is that knowledge that has been there for a while.
How many projects have, has staff brought forward to us in the last two years for any of these funds?
We have not brought any of the projects forward, and that, you know, we, you know, based on, you know, what we were going to do for, with the consortium and, you know, unable, we were not able to get a decision, you know, to move forward with a certain project. And so, you know, out of, out of just caution, we didn't purchase anything, we didn't rehab anything, we didn't move forward with any new project.
So zero, you guys haven't brought anything forward?
Correct. Yeah, we did a couple of rehab projects and, you know, and that was probably it.
Yeah, when I came on, we had about 4.5 million, if I can remember it straight. Now we've got almost 19 million of funds, and we have been paid for the administration of those funds already, which we haven't administered them, so we've been paid in advance. So when we say that we're going to need to come out of pocket, no, I don't, I don't agree with that because I think that we've already been paid in advance for something that we didn't do yet. So we, you know, we may have spent it on staffing, but we didn't spend it on, on administration of the consortium.
Well, I mean, in all fairness, the 18 million, I mean, like I said, a lot of it has come in the last two years with the Home ARP, with large payoffs from Avina Bella and from Cherry Tree. I mean, that's almost seven, seven, eight million dollars that we've received. The monies that were there, they've always been there. We budgeted every year, so if you look back in previous year's budgets, those amounts that were there were always there. It's not that all of a sudden this 18 million dollars appeared. We haven't spent it. We have focused on the CDBG and the home programs instead of looking at some of the other funding that has sat there for many years, and that's been because the other programs didn't have the timeliness that the CDBG and the home programs have. So we focus on the immediate expenditure deadlines versus other programs that don't have those deadlines in place for us.
So do you foresee in the future that we'll have more time because we're not managing the entirety of the consortium, that we can really focus on Turlock and making sure that we, we spend this almost 19 million dollars in senior projects and low-income projects? And some of this, some of this money has to be spent on homeless projects. So now, don't, do you, do you consider that you're going to have a little more time to focus on spending it, you know, for Turlock?
We've always only focused on Turlock.
Well, we had to manage the consortium.
We have, we have the consortium, but like you had brought up in the last, you know, four years, it's all been consortium, I mean, only Turlock projects. You know, none of our consortium members have had any projects to work with, so we've only had Turlock to focus on. Prior to that, each jurisdiction is responsible for the creation of their own projects when they have it. We just help with the oversight of it, but we do not run their programs for them. It has, our Turlock staff only reports to HUD on the expenditure of their funding if it is expended. Our staff has focused on Turlock projects and over, you know, since the home consortium has been created. But the other cities, when they are creating a project or doing a project, they do it themselves.
And the 5.323 million dollars from the Home ARP money, why was that never brought to council that we received it?
That was part, it was designated by us, it was designated to us as an allocation. We didn't apply for it. As a home entity or the lead home entity, it was provided to us. It wasn't something that we had to accept. It was just in our...
The council wouldn't have to accept money coming into the consortium?
No, it was, it was an authorization by the city manager at the time, and that was brought to the city manager and the mayor, I believe, for their signatures. The letters went to the mayor, I believe.
But mayor doesn't sign anything.
I don't sign anything.
No, no, she doesn't sign it, but the letter of the monies that were going to be coming into the city were sent to, to the mayor, I believe, and then the city manager signed the funding.
George, or, excuse me, city attorney, I would kind of like a clarification on that. Shouldn't the city council have to accept 5.323 million dollars coming into our budget?
It came under the home allocation.
We still approved the home?
Right, and because we had approved the home as a home consortium lead, that all of the money was, came to the cities who were home consortium recipients.
My answer would be, past city managers have their own practices, and my practice is I would have brought this to council daily.
Thank you. Anyway, move to approve.
I have a couple of follow-up questions based on that. The eight, so the fact that we have this money that has been kind of growing in this savings account, like a lot of it, like a lot of money that has... in this savings account, like a lot of it, like a lot of money that hasn't gone out to the community, which is, yeah, which is concerning. And there's been, I can think of off the top of my head, three times where the housing staff has come to us to get approval on the guidelines, procedures, and policies of how we would direct the city to spend those funds, and there's been no movement on that. So, yes, that money has not gone to the community, but that's not, it's, that's on the council to design how we spend those funds. We can't just, we can't expect them just the same way the concern is being raised of you guys accepting millions of dollars. I don't, wouldn't feel comfortable if you guys were spending three times that much without any authorization or any direction from the policymakers up here.
Up here.
So, I'd, and I, to imply that the, the time that would be spent as being the lead agency of the entire regional authority that, that extends, expends and evaluates and puts these funds into our community, at a regional level, you are still Turlock staff, you are still a participant and the lead agency. You obviously have the interest in the people that sign your paycheck and making sure that those funds are available to it. So, to imply that there's any type of, we're saving time or focus or things like that, we're still have the same amount of focus. The only thing that we lose now is we lose free money and we also lose staff that has been here for over two decades or the potential of it, because now it's going to have to come out of general fund before it was paid for by free money. So, that's, that's just the clarification of that. Thank you.
Just going to make a quick comment, no questions for you. Thank you for your service and what you've provided here. I'm just going to echo what Milt is saying, it's just very confusing as to how we've arrived to this position. It arrived before the council, right here behind the dais, without it being a strategic plan. There was no call for it from the public. I know that across the board, we, we do have a strong desire for better housing options for those in our community that have needs, and there are real things that we could be doing at the policy level to make it, make Turlock more affordable, more friendly towards the development of affordable housing. I would like for us to go away from really looking into the nitty-gritty of how maybe staff is not doing things exactly how we want them to do, leave that up to the city management to perform evaluation of the effectiveness of the staff. And then for us to reorient and focus on policy. We can take, we can go after developing policies that are pro-housing and seek pro-housing designation from the state. The federal government has recently released some updated guidelines that is going to continue to encourage cities to seek pro-housing designation that will allow us to access more capital for building housing. And that's, at the end of the day, I hope that across the board here, this council recognizes that we talk about senior housing and low-income housing. We've got that need. Now, I, I don't know that we've, we've gotten to this step in a very graceful or elegant manner, but let's all agree that we need to build housing and build a lot of it to, and do it really quick because the economic times, economic conditions are getting worse every single day and more and more people are, you know, being threatened to end up out on, on the streets unless we make some radical changes here.
Mr. Wilson?
I just want to make it clear to the council that the council authorized me to make the decision about whether or not we were going to be in the consortium or not. I made a decision for us to withdraw.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion on the table, and I'll give it a second. And then, just for the sake of argument here, I, I'll never support affordable housing because that's a misnomer. It's accessible housing. It's how much money do you have? Affordable is, is something that no one can ever articulate what that is. So, we need to make sure the words fit the, the reality of life, and nothing's affordable. Not gas, not food, not health care, nothing. So, on that, my second, call the roll, please.
Clarification, there is a HUD definition for affordable housing. It's one-third of your income. And I, as a council member, would love to create conditions that spur more houses in the market and the housing inventory that are one-third of the household income and within the city boundaries. That's something we should want to see.
Call the roll.
And if we vote no on this, we won't be eligible for our distributions.
Correct, for the next three years.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bubla?
Yes, passes 4-0, thank you for that. And then, I guess, you're up for item C, please.
Thank you. Okay. So, the resolution, this is the one-year annual funding agreement, so it's tied to the three years. So, next year, we'll come back for the second year and the third year and so on. So, the resolution before you is to provide the city manager to enter into the one-year funding agreement with Stanislaus County for the Home Investment Partnership Program. The one-year home agreement, which is Exhibit A, is the mechanism that is used to provide the Stanislaus Home Consortium funds to Turlock. The agreement will be for the upcoming '22, '23 fiscal year, or July 1st of '22 through June 30th of '23. Turlock's allocation will be in the amount of $192,064 for eligible home activities. There was no funding that was set aside for administration costs. The Stanislaus County Home Consortium eligible activities were identified by the county to be affordable housing, housing rehab, first-time home buyers, and community housing development organizations or choo-choo projects. These funds will not be available to Turlock to receive until the new Stanislaus Home Consortium has been established by HUD. The county does expect that to come by December. We can expend the funds, but we won't be reimbursed until they get the authority to, or are designated as the new lead consortium. Staff recommends approval of the Stanislaus County, the Stanislaus County Home Annual Funding Agreement. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for Ms. Ramos? And welcome to the public. Anyone wishing to speak regarding this? Okay, we'll close it and bring it back.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Seconded. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bubla?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Ramos. Passe is 4-0. Moving back to public participation, this is time set aside, five minutes for people to talk to, speak to items that are on today's agenda, anything that we can specifically assist with. And ma'am, you are first, is it Vanita?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, City Council, Fire Chief, Police, everybody. I'm, I'm really quite stunned listening about the numbers being tossed around here. My project is not nearly so grand, but it is so important. Right now, animal control has no money, and they're overflowing with animals. And in particular, I was working on a TNR project. This is such hard work, and I was doing it myself. The city animal shelter was paying for the spay neuter, and I was paying for pain medicine, food, transportation, caring for the animals, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This was a little community project with people in my apartment building and me. We are all on fixed incomes, by the way. So, we would get little donations and then, well, and then the rest was on me. So, the total on that was like $284.11. So, so far, we've done five cats, and there's only like three more to do. I, I don't want things to get out of control. Right now, the Animal Control Center here in Turlock cannot, they're not doing anything with cats. They're overflowing, they've got puppies everywhere, inside the office, everywhere. There's no money for the cats. And I'm right in the middle of completing my TNR project, and I'm, I'm requesting, I'm begging, actually, for any money, and I don't care where it comes from, an emergency fund, whether it goes to animal control, the police department, wherever it goes. I have a number with, with Turlock Animal Control, I don't know if I still have it, but I just called them today, they don't want to hear from me anymore, there's no money. And, and I'm only three animals short, and I have actually one female in a crate that I bought that had, bore kittens while she was in a cage ready to be transported. So, I'm caring for them too. She's not going anywhere until she's spayed, okay? I have like $55 toward her spay. I've got the costs here for, cat spay is $80, cat neuter $55. And, and then I pay for post-op pain injection, $10, plus I, again, the transport, the traffic, et cetera, et cetera. And I need to get three more cats done, two females and one male. Or even if I can just get two females done, I would be so happy. And if I can get that money from anywhere, and, and you'll have my phone number, and please, I just want to get it done. It is so close to being done. And in about two weeks, the female will be ready to be spayed that's inside the dog crate, and I'm taking care of her kittens too. What I'm doing with them, I don't know yet, there's four. But for the females, so like in two, two, three weeks, they'll be ready, those are the ones I'm caring for now. And they're very expensive too. I'm taking care of all the food, the shelter, everything for them, medicine and so forth. So, as I said, I do have the, my person ID number, I don't know if it's still valid with animal control, but it's my own little project. And as I said before, we're on, all on fixed income, and we've already spent a lot of money, and I'm still spending money. And we're not quite there with spaying one more cat, and there's still at least two females and one male that needs done. I've got to get that money from somewhere, from you all, just for those three. And then we'll be done on our little square. There's plenty of community cats around, and we all know because of the COVID crisis and everything, everything was put on the back burner. There's kittens everywhere, and believe me, I'm in like at least nine different Facebook groups. There's too many kittens and cats all over the place. No, there's no help anywhere. This is the only place that I can get help at is right here, right here, and, you know, within the next couple of weeks. And please, somebody call me or do something or authorize or get some money to the animal control, please, they're overflowing. I mean, have you been in there? Has anyone been in there and looked around? Oh, my goodness. Anyway, they don't want to hear from me anymore, like I said. I've done enough calls, and they said no. So, I'm here to ask money for both animal control because they're broke and skeleton staff, and somehow through them or through the clinic or however you all want to do it, I don't care, it's only three more cats, it's not even like $300, it's $280, I think.
Where do you take them to have them neutered and spayed?
They're done at the, at the Turlock Spay and Neuter Clinic on Walllet.
Okay.
And...
Well, they, they should sign up for Rad Card, and then that money would just come to them.
For Rad?
Want to talk to her, Macy?
Really?
Me, them, not you, yeah.
But, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, for sure, though.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. What?
Well, she needs a Rad Card too, on her own personal. Anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Mr. Trueller? Did you want to speak, sir? Okay. No one? Okay, we will close public participation and move on to motion weaving all ordinances on the agenda except the title.
Send them.
We have a motion?
Second?
And a second.
Call the roll. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bubla?
Yes, passes 5-0, thank you. Consent for, wow, oops, they just came out like that. Consent calendar, anything to be removed or separate consideration?
Item E.
Item E, Edward, is polled, okay. Anything else? If not, now, motion is second to adopt.
Move to approve is amended.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second?
And a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nasrati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Bubla?
Yes, passes 4-0. Item E is motion approving amendment to, between the City of Turlock and Michael Baker International, IC, regarding the 15 roads. Councilmember?
Looking to get like a verbal update about the calendaring of these items.
Okay, so, Ms. Quintero, or did Mr. Possesh, or anybody?
And the calendaring, are you looking specifically at the scheduling for when the road repair will begin?
Correct, yeah, yes, please.
So, with this proposed amendment, there is a revised schedule that was attached to that at the very end that shows ultimately what the new proposed schedule would be. So, essentially puts the... Let me get to my summary here. Essentially puts that we'll receive bid documents approximately September 9th. The bid advertisement would have to be out, so we'd assume that that would be out starting September 14th, it needs to be out for a four-week period. So, that looks at basically best kind of case scenario, construction being able to start end of November after getting through, getting the bid package. The representatives from Michael Baker are here as well, if you'd like to hear from them on scheduling or other questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to get an update from you guys as to, I know that we had some big expectations about quick projects turnaround, and now we're looking at November to start, so maybe you guys can speak to that.
Sure, thank you, councilmember. So, the amendment that's before you today really talks about two things. One is drainage in Package 1. As we went out in design, we found particularly at the intersections, there were a lot of problems with drainage. There are devices, pipes that are very shallow that we simply couldn't work around. If we were to go in and grind down the asphalt, it would hit the pipe and make it functionally a mess and have to be removed. So, this amendment really relates to Package 1 for the drainage. The direct identification of the gas line on Fosberg is Package 2, which was not affected by the schedule. We have been looking at ways to expedite work in Package 2, particularly, we've got two roads on Package 2, Fosberg and Wayside. As I mentioned, amendment, this amendment affects the Package 1 streets. So, on Package 2, we've been talking internally and think we can expedite one of those two streets, either Wayside or Fosberg, and get that advertised or get that completed with 100% PSNE by the end of July of this year. I would like to point out that on Wayside, there are a couple of issues that we'll need to work with city staff on. One is there's a county pocket that is in the middle of the roadway. I understand the city has an agreement with the county for funding. We've talked to the county, and we will continue to design that, but that's a matter of the city and the county just coming to agreement on, you know, how that's paid for, the construction portion. And the other issue on Wayside is a sewer line. So, the city has a project to design a sewer line on Wayside. I understand the city's working on it now. So, we'll coordinate with the city to make sure that that sewer line either gets done, you know, before we go in, or that work is moved out to a later date. But that is something we believe we can do to expedite the schedule on the Package 2 portion.
So, was the original proposed timeline of being able to get 15 projects done by the end of the year, operating under the assumption that we weren't going to be having any of these aforementioned issues with the drainage and the piping?
That is correct. It's, our scope of work specifically excluded drainage work. As you recall, when we first approached the council, the work that we were going to perform was a simple grind and overlay. So, we went in, we did all the surveying work, and we found out, and did visual surveys of the intersections in particular, and found these anomalies that couldn't have been identified through essentially aerial photography. You really had to go and look at it and get a topo survey. And that's when we looked at that amendment for the drainage. I mean, the other option was to just not do the work in the intersections, but then that wouldn't solve the problem. So, when you do a street, you want to make sure that you get a complete, you know, project that you don't have to come back later on for the drainage portion. So, that's why we felt that it was important and city staff agreed to include that in the project.
Would it be safe to assume that we're going to be experiencing similar delays for some of the roads that maybe we had previously anticipated an ability to simply do a slurry seal? Is this...
Not necessarily. So, when we, when we were here originally, we had told the council that we were going to pick 15 streets that were simple streets, grind and overlay. And what we looked at, you know, just from visual observations, looked like they were easy to do, but the devil's in the details. So, when we got into detailed design, we found these other issues with the street. Now, we came in with an extremely aggressive schedule. We've been working with city staff to try to turn these around, but this project is progressing... progressing in a, in a very fast timeline. That being said, we want to make sure we don't make mistakes. So on the next set of streets, we're hoping that the schedule won't be as compressed as it is now. There will be more time to go out and actually on individual packages, go out and do a visual survey of the streets before submitting a proposal, a detailed survey. Look at what's included and what's not. And I, I go back to the scope of work. When we entered into this, our scope was pretty clear. It was for a simple grind and overlay project. Now, as you've released the other packages, your staff, as well as Michael Baker, knows what's out there now. So I think people are going to understand when we go into these projects that we're not going to be able to do the design as quickly as we thought, but that the scope will reflect that additional work.
Did you receive clarification on really the, some of these issues from, from our staff themselves, or was it all through information you guys obtained through your survey?
Well, it was a combination of both. So we go out, we do our survey, we find issues, we talk to staff. You have employees that have been here for a while that, that know these things called tin horns. They're shallow pipes. And so when we started looking at these, staff confirmed, yeah, there's, there's some problems there. But it was, it was a kind of a collaborative, collective aha moment. You know, we've got these issues at intersections, we really need to deal with these.
And, and like we talked about the last time you guys were here, I would be very surprised if any of, if the answer is yes for any of these roads, because the condition is so terrible. But are any of these roads in assessment districts?
Of the fifteen streets?
Yes.
No, they're not.
Okay. So they're not eligible for any other sources of funding, I guess?
That's not my understanding. No, that's confirmed. They're not in the assessment district areas.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. LiDAR and radar helped you determine some of these issues that couldn't be seen by the naked eye, or, and our ASBILs weren't as informative as maybe they could have been?
So there's very few ASBILs there. What the mobile LiDAR and the LCMS work does is it essentially is, is kind of a surveying tool. It provides not only a visual picture, but it provides elevation. So what we did was we took that information and hired a local surveyor and actually took the topo and tied it to ground, if you understand what that means, so that we did have a topo. And that was a result of that, the mobile LiDAR and the LCMS.
Right. And that, that probably was the key for your finding the shallow sewer line.
Well, it certainly helped. I mean, it was, yeah, the survey will reveal that as well as walking the streets, but the survey really, along with the mobile LiDAR, was what tipped us off.
Learning a lot of lingo here. Topo, ASBIL, tin horns. I, I like BOGO, but that's probably nothing to do with this. Any other questions for? Okay, we're going to go ahead and open it to the public. Anyone wishing to speak about our roads? Mr. Truweather?
Yes, council staff, Turlock citizens. We all know that road repair, or we should all know, every council member, every staff member in the city should know that road repair takes time and effort and money. We don't even have a public works department. We have no city engineer, we have no assistant city engineer, we don't have anyone who can do anything, and now we're just in this confusion. Nothing has transpired since Nathan left. We're just in this vacuum, and we don't know what's happening because we don't have staff members to figure out what's happening. We need some direction here, not from the council, but from a man who knows what he's doing, our city manager, so we can get some things done in this city. It's, it's ridiculous that we keep going on and kind of messing around with this. We need to get our staff built up. I mean, across the street from me is the main, just like the line that goes through Fosberg, that goes right in front of my house, right in front of Osborne School. We don't have enough staff here to even know that. I had to go out and talk, I mean, I called PG&E because they were over there, the school's doing construction project right across the street from me. And they had a compactor machine pounding on top of a San Bruno pipeline, a high-pressure gas pipeline. I was on the phone with PG&E for forty-five minutes. He said, go over and talk to the foreman. I went over and talked to the foreman. I went out in that field. I'm not afraid of construction. There was all kinds of equipment. I just be careful. I went and got the foreman. And I said, how come this guy is running a compactor fifteen feet from the line that blew up in San Bruno? I mean, that's the thing, it was shaking my house. It was shaking the ducting in my house. We need public work staff, and we need to quit playing around. We need to do something constructive and intelligent for a change. Anyway, the guy went out and talked to the operator. No, he didn't know that. And I found that out because I talked to another friend who worked for the city of Modesto, and he said, these operators don't always get everything funneled down to them. They're just out there doing their job. They, they're the one that got the job that day. They were called out for the job. I mean, I don't know, they were kids, by the way, there were children in that school at the time. If that pipe had burst, it's a pipe like this full of high-pressure natural gas. What are we doing in this city? This city is falling apart. We've got to get our staff, we've got to get going, and that is our responsibility. And I'm hoping we're all going to work together and do a good job to accomplish that. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak regarding this item of roads? All right, let's close that. Mr. Wilson, as the city manager, you put this agenda together with staff. You put this on here because you believe we can handle it, or because you just thought we'd try it?
I believe we can handle it.
Okay. All right, what's the will of council?
Just a comment here. Yeah, I mean, I, I know that prior to getting Michael Baker on board, this council regularly complained about change orders and delays on our, on our road efforts. I would just hope that we continue to maintain the same demands as we've moved from a public employee that we individually could hold accountable to a private agency who's being contracted to do a service. I really want, would like to know how we are going to measure the quality and effectiveness of this contract. I don't, I'm not an expert in these, in this work. I know, I know we've had difficulty getting some key positions that would kind of help us oversee these projects, and just hope that we can address and resolve that as soon as possible.
Well, the good news is that finding these issues now saves us from change orders later on down the road, because we would have approved a, a project that would have had sewer issues, water issues, storm drainage issues. And, and now we know it right up front. And yeah, this is a, a change order to Michael Baker's contract, but it's a very small change order compared to a change order that we would have gotten later on for these same items. So with that, I move to approve.
Yeah, and with that, I agree. I, I think that it's, it's a small change order compared to especially how much we've already paid these consultants to this, to this work. And I, even if there was, you know, a motion or will of the council now to, to bring this back and have it be designed in-house, because I, I think that our staff would, would catch majority of these items based on what was already acknowledged. There's a lot of institutional knowledge at our staff. They know Turlock, they've been working here, their careers are here. I think that there's a lot of ability to design these in-house. But regardless, and being really pragmatic about this, it's going to probably get, go through anyways, even if it does get pushed to a later date. So because of that, I want to see these roads get done, and we're already going down this, this direction. Whereas if I agree with the direction, now it's here, I'll, I'll second the motion to make sure that these roads get done.
So the answer is Mr. Possesh is our roads are, and we also just hired GM to take care of everything, so we do have oversight underneath the city manager, within Ms. Quintero. We have people that are doing this with experts that are, are in the field. So I will always hold people accountable. I hope to be held accountable as well. That's how life is, that's what we do. Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nazrati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Franco?
Yes.
Mayor Boobla?
Yes, it passes four, zero. Thank you for that. There are no final readings, there are no public hearings. Action items have been done in a weird order. City manager reports, anything, sir?
Well, interestingly enough, I wanted to report then on the status of our recruitments in various departments in the city. So you'll just bear with me. We have a number of recruitments in various stages right now, forty-four. Okay, that's about ten percent of our workforce. Number of candidates expected to start in the month of June is only six. Total number of vacancies is fifty-five. We have six positions that are frozen that we don't think are essential to be filled. Some of the important jobs that could be filled is an associate civil engineer, who we may fill in as an acting city engineer. We're missing a city engineer. We're missing a public works director, though we have a deputy public works director who's been doing a great job. We need a chief building official, we need a new court, another code enforcement officer, we need a public safety business analyst. Those are just some of the more important jobs we have vacant that we're busy recruiting for. So overall, about twelve and a half percent of the workforce is vacant in the city's stuff.
And is that any less or more than any other city typically?
I haven't checked what other cities' vacancy factors are. What I know is in, in recruitment, we're very competitive with everybody else, and they all seem to be suffering the same problem, that there just doesn't seem to be people interested in going to work.
Okay, thank you for that. Council items for future consideration.
I, I will leave this to the city manager to determine when it would be an appropriate time to do this, but I, I've said it before, pro-housing designation. We're, we're making some moves related to our housing department. There are things that the state recommends to seek pro-housing designation, and we could become a city that is recognized as such, which would give us greater access to capital to develop affordable housing. I want this council to be given an opportunity to support housing with, with a vote.
I'm sorry, I, I forgot. I, I had a great conversation with Mr. Wilson about a project that I've mentioned, not only a project, but like a program that I've mentioned up here a couple of times. I think it's ridiculous that if we identify a sidewalk in front of someone's house, we make them pay for it, even though we're the ones that go out there and call it for ADA compliance. A little, a, a person who has, needs access to an ADA-compliant sidewalk, has no idea, they call the city and go, hey, I need some help, I can't walk on my sidewalk. We come out there, we highlight it, and says, yeah, that's on your tab. Ridiculous. I think we should have a way for, for us to augment that as a city. I get that there's some implications on that, but having a great conversation with the city manager about that, I would love to see something like that come forward. And I think that everybody up here, from my radar, which can definitely be off sometimes, it seems like we're all pretty much on the same page about that.
Anything? Okay. Council comments and announcements. Councilmember Larson? Councilmember Nazrati?
Just a couple of comments here. I would just caution this council against moving items ahead of public participation. I know we lost a member from the public that had a comment, that they wanted to speak to us about something, but they had to wait for a couple of different presentations. We've done this a handful of times, and I, I just think it signals to the public that we are prioritizing other things ahead of their participation. On that note, would love to get our Zoom back up and running as soon as possible, increase the accessibility of these meetings, increase the level of public participation as much as possible. It's the only way that we can effectively govern. I want to respond to the insinuation of the mayor that there was grandstanding occurring here when we were, when I, I spoke out against this budget. Like, you indicated you like, you would like to be held accountable. My job here is to recognize when there are decisions that are out of alignment with what I believe this, the members of the public want. Me making comment in opposition to a budget should not be categorized as grandstanding. That's what I've been elected to do, represent the people and speak on their behalf. So I would ask you to reconsider that statement. On youth drug prevention, I've indicated previously that if we truly prioritize and value this effort, that we should allocate resources and staffing to move it forward. Any effort, we have a, a budget of in excess of fifty million dollars, and to ask volunteer council members who are getting paid five hundred dollars a month to generate a report, a staff report, and bring it back for consideration, it indicates that it is not a priority of this council. The way you indicate your priorities as a member of this council is based on your allocation of resources and funds, not based on volunteer hours. So give, assign it to a member of staff and tell them, come back with recommendations as to how we can give this money to our service providers that can start putting programs together for youth drug prevention. I know there's some in our community that are in need today. And just generally speaking to over-promising and under-delivering, it's a, a theme that I've witnessed over the last couple of years. We, in the beginning of last year, we said we were going to review the municipal code chapter by chapter and adopt a new one. That's just now, now no longer something that we're going to do. We promised that, we didn't do it. We promised a timeline for the, the housing, or the, the homeless crisis and developing a plan. Significant delays there, there is traction, but just, let's just be realistic and honest with the public. Yes, it's great to dream, but let's make sure that we're clearly indicating when things are aspirational and when things are realistic. We're seeing it again with our roads initiative. We're now entering campaign season, so everything that we say, let's just try and be as honest as possible with the members of the public so they can make informed decisions based on facts.
Well, I'm looking forward to the Fourth of July parade, which is not going to be on the Fourth of July. It's actually going to be on the Second of July. So please mark your calendars to attend the Fourth of July parade on the Second of July. Also, Turlock Canine is having a fajita dinner. Tickets on Facebook and Instagram. You can Venmo your tickets, and, and I did so. So I'm looking forward to a great fajita dinner that's on July second. Go out to the farmer's market, make sure you support our local vendors. There, there's some great vendors out there. I was talking to one of the vendors this Saturday, and he's a farmer, and he's having a difficult time because of the increase of prices in fertilizers, and people are not so nice to him about him having to increase his prices, which we all know everyone's prices are increasing. So let's support our local, our local vendors, and happy Flag Day, everyone.
And happy birthday to the Army, I believe, is also today. And Fourth of July, absolutely. I hope people, if there's still, is there still a chance that people can get in with floats? Yeah? All right, all right, good. And other than that, I just want to, again, thank Stanislaus, Opportunity Stanislaus for the Business Summit. It was, it was really a, a great experience. I hope to see it really grow. That was really great for the businesses, and I've, I've had a lot of feedback, positive feedback for it. So moving on to closed session. What do you have, ma'am?
All right, Madam Mayor, for closed session. Item A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, California Government Code 54956.92. Potential cases, four. Item B is conference with labor negotiators, California Government Code 54957.6A. The agency designated representative is Deputy City Manager Sarah Eddy. Employee organization, Turlock Management Association, Public Safety, Turlock Firefighters Association, Local 2434.
All right, and we will report out should there be something. Thank you.
Can you do this and I'm gonna go put these away.
Um, yes.
You're back, are we not? Uh, George, George, uh, we're not?
I'm not even gonna walk back in there.
And we're back. Okay. Uh, we have nothing to report, Madam Clerk, so we're, uh, going to adjourn and we will see you in two weeks. Thank you, everybody.